At this time, we need to have an approval of the planning commission meetings minutes from last meeting. Do I have a motion?
Roll call.
Do I have a roll call? Well, first, we have to have a motion, right? Then we have a roll call.
Well, we need a roll call for the meeting.
Okay. Oh, for attendance?
Yes.
Sounds good.
Commissioner Blanco.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez?
Here.
Mr. Dickerson is absent. Commissioner Mohajer?
Here.
Chair Seifert?
Here. And do I hear a motion for the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes from November 1st, 2023.
Need a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, we're going into public comment period. We'll hear from Kathleen first.
If you are participating via Zoom and wish to make a public comment, please use the raise hand button in the Zoom meeting portal. If you're using a phone, press star nine on your telephone keypad, then press star six to unmute your phone. When it's your time to speak, you will be requested to unmute your microphone and speak for the time allotted by the chair. Your microphone will be muted upon completion of your comments. Unless otherwise directed by the chair, speakers will have three minutes to comment.
Thank you, Kathleen. At this time, we'll have the public comment period, and each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited to the discussion of three minutes, or as otherwise directed by chair. We do have a speaker tonight. Mr. Benjamin Ortiz, please step up to the podium, state your name and address. Thank you very much.
Hi. My name is Benjamin Ortiz. Feel a little weird giving out my address, but I was born and raised here in Santa Maria, and I currently live in Santa Maria. I'd like to convey an observation and make a request this evening. I only recently began attending these meetings, so please keep that in mind. My context is limited. In meetings I have attended, I observed that commissioners and staff were concerned with parking. When it came to the Blosser Ranch development, for example, you all explained that parking is a problem in Santa Maria. You were appreciative that the developer was going above and beyond the minimum parking requirements. I agree. I agree with you all that Santa Maria has a parking problem. My request this evening is that commissioners and staff explore more solutions to the parking problem. One solution is to reduce the need for parking in the first place, and I'd like to take a moment to give some concrete examples of what I mean. One way to reduce the need for parking is to improve our transit systems, such that trips can practically be completed without driving. As an example, during the Blosser Ranch reviews, a bullet point indicated that there were transit connections available, but I did not hear a discussion about it. Are the transit stops near enough to be practically useful? What are the transit stops like? How often do the buses come, and which routes are near? I would appreciate if the commission asked these questions and advocated for improvements here to help our parking problem. Another way to reduce the need for parking is to improve our cycling infrastructure. Continuing to use the Blosser Ranch development as an example, I didn't hear about bikes outside of the parking availability for residents at their community center. What is it like to bike to the nearby commercial zone? Is it safe from traffic? Is it safe for a kid? Is there a secure location to store bikes at the destination, and what amenities are accessible on a quick ride? Again, I would appreciate if the commission asked these questions and advocated for improvements here to help our parking problem. Finally, if more trips can be made by walking, that reduces the need for parking. So, continuing with the example, once you get outside the pedestrian gates of Blosser Ranch, what are the conditions like? How fast is traffic moving past you? Am I walking past anything interesting? How many lanes of traffic do I have to cross to get to my destination? And who gets priority at a signal? And what amenities can I get to in a 15-minute walk from my front door? When reviewing future development plans, I would appreciate the commission asking questions about the pedestrian, cycling, and the transit experience. Your advocacy will help address the root of the parking problem by reducing the need for so many parking spaces. Thank you all for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. All of the meetings are available on YouTube, and you can look and see that some of those were addressed. Most of them, actually. Thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate it. At this time, we are going to go into public hearings. We're going to be seeing item number 5A, Cook Street Apartments Downtown Permit at the 200 block of East Cook Street. We're ready for a staff presentation. Please.
Excuse me, Chair. I do have to accuse the applicant as a client of the firm in which I'm employed.
Thank you. We do have another item after this. If you could wait around, that would be great. Thank you very much. Do we have any expertise on this item while we're waiting? Cook Street. I did talk to Brian Schwartz of UPC on this item. I think we're ready to go.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. My name is Frank Alvaro. I'm principal planner, and I'm going to be presenting the Cook Street Apartments Downtown Permit DT 2022-0017 for the commission's consideration this evening. So this is a project that is within the heart of the downtown area. It is located on East Cook Street at the intersection of McClelland and Cook, and what is known as the entrance to the Town Center East Shopping Center. It's shown in the yellow highlight here. The project location is within the Town Center District of the downtown specific plan, directly across from the Civic District where many of the city offices, county offices are located. The project is a 0.69 acre site. The proposed building is six stories, 70 feet tall, with additional height for tower additions. The building is approximately 52,000 square feet in size, and will include just over 2,000 square feet of commercial space on the ground floor. The main use of the building is residential, and 104 residential units are proposed with a mix of studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom units. Here's an enlarged view of the site location. As you can see, it's immediately abutting the parking garage that provides the parking for the mall and also other downtown uses. On September 20th, 2022, the City Council declared a portion of this property as surplus lands. The tan area shown, as well as the parking garage to its north, is city property currently. The light blue area is the privately owned property, and the gray area at the lower end of the graphic is the city right-of-way. So the city parcel, and this portion of it is 0.25 of an acre, a quarter of an acre, was determined by the City Council to be surplus lands, which makes it available for the city to transfer to a different owner, and sale or lease of the property is made possible by the surplus lands process. By declaring this property surplus lands, the city is facilitating the development of the private parcels by providing that extra space needed for some of the building footprint and also some of the building's amenities. Here's a street view showing the site, and the site is in between that sidewalk and the parking garage. And off in the distance on the left-hand side of the photograph, you can see the multiplex theater in the background. Here's another view taken from the intersection of Cook and McClelland, looking approximately So like our typical zoning code, our Title 12 zoning code, the downtown specific plan requires certain development standards, including setbacks, and in this case, the applicant is asking for an adjustment to the required setbacks, specifically the front setback, which would be along Cook Street. The requirement from the downtown plan is that 15 feet be provided to the main structure. The applicant is requesting that this project be allowed to be at that front property line. The downtown specific plan does allow for these kinds of requests, citing that the setbacks may be reduced on a case-by-case basis if the planning commission determines that superior project design is achieved. Parking is another standard that is slightly different than our typical Title 12 zoning code. The downtown specific plan sets out a requirement based on spaces per dwelling unit size. So as you can see in the peach-colored table, half a space is required for units 400 square feet or less. One space is required for units 600 feet or greater, and anything in between those two sizes is 3/4 of a space per that unit. So for this project, 180, excuse me, 83 spaces are required for the 104 units. The applicant proposes to satisfy this parking requirement by using the adjacent parking garage. And again, this is something that the downtown specific plan details out, that projects are permitted to use adjacent parking facilities to help reduce parking requirements. And so in this case, the use of that parking garage would require, because it is a city-owned parking garage, would require the applicant to process a disposition and development agreement, to work out the details of exactly where that parking would be placed. Is the parking going to be secured in any way? How are residents going to be differentiated from the commercial users of the mall and that sort of thing? All of those details are to be determined in the yet-to-be-approved disposition and development agreement. That agreement is going to be subject to City Council review and approval, and is separate from this downtown permit. However, this downtown permit, since parking is a code requirement, is reliant on the applicant processing and getting that development agreement approved with the city. Therefore, in the conditions of approval, specifically regarding parking, the applicant is not able to receive building permits until that development agreement has been secured and recorded. Going to the floor plan proposed for the building, what's depicted here is the ground floor, and there are two main entrances. This would be the main commercial entrance, and what's shown in purple here is the proposed commercial floor area. And then there would be also a resident-only entrance located in the center of the building. There's also going to be pathways at the ground level entering into the garage. You can see the layout here is a combination, as noted earlier, of one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and some studio units. There are no studio units on this floor, however. There will be two elevators in the building, one located at the residential area, one located adjacent to the commercial area. There's also going to be a manager's building, meeting room, a mailroom, and every floor has a laundry room for the use of the residential tenants. Here's an enlargement of the commercial area, so you can see the area here. The applicant is considering that this may very well be a restaurant or small café. Here's a lobby where some dining tables may be placed, and again, here's the manager and administration rooms for the complex. You can see that three spaces, parking spaces, are proposed with the, excuse me, onsite. The remainder of the parking will be provided in the parking garage. So there are typical layouts for the mid-level floors. They change a little bit between what the bedroom count is and where the units are placed. But as an example, again, there will be a storage room. There'll be laundry rooms on each floor, restrooms available on each floor. With the second level, there's going to be a terrace that is adjacent to the port de cachet. And then upper levels, well, let me move back. So here's the sixth floor, excuse me, not back. There will be another terrace, a multi-purpose room, an exercise room, also some common restrooms, and a little dining or kitchen area for the use of the tenants. As I said, again, each floor has a laundry facility, and each floor will have a trash drop or a trash chute that leads to the ground floor where the refuse enclosures are going to be stored within the building. So moving on to the elevations, part of the downtown plan in terms of meeting the intent of the specific plan is how well a project responds to the design standards. This one meets the majority of the design requirements outlined in the specific plan by, first of all, emulating the architecture of nearby structures, defining a style, which is clearly Spanish in this case, and then providing details which support that style. So you see the red barrel tile roofs, the tower elements with finials, the wrought iron-style railing, stonework at the ground levels reaching up to higher levels to form a base of the building, and some other design features like the potted plants, light fixtures, the port de cachet, all support the Spanish look of the building. They all provide multiple exterior materials, which is specified by the downtown specific plan, and therefore the staff supports this project and recommends its approval as meeting many of the design standards of the downtown specific plan. So here is the north-facing elevation. This would be the elevation facing the parking structure, a little bit less detailed, but still very well detailed. The third floor will have two pedestrian bridges that lead to the parking garage and connect it with the parking. But as you can see, there's still the same wrought iron detailing for the balconies, red tile roofs. The tower elements are evident, as well as the stonework at the base of the building. Here is the view. This is the east elevation, or looking from the port de cachet at the center entryway to the parking garage. A little less detail here, but still good articulation. The materials are still visible. You can see the step down at the ends of the higher level to try and soften the height of the building, and also the tower elements to break up the roof plane. In the distance, you can see the pedestrian crossings located at the third level of the parking garage. So as I mentioned, the strip between the proposed building and the parking garage is proposed to be transferred to the applicant. Again, this is something that will be handled through the disposition and development agreement, and is not specifically a part of this downtown permit. However, the applicant is proposing to use this area as partially an amenity area, but also serve as emergency access for the rear of the building, and also provide some of the low-impact development or stormwater drainage areas that are required for this development. So those are going to be placed in the corridor between the building and the parking garage. As I mentioned, this area here, shown in a grass crete, will be landscaped, but it will also serve as the emergency access for the fire department. The fire department is willing to work with the applicant on what sort of amenities may be placed in this area. The fire department indicates, as long as they're movable, if there was an issue, that the fire staff could move those items out of the way. So benches, tables, chairs, things that would be movable by a person or a couple of persons should be things that are acceptable, and will serve as amenities for the tenants, as well as for the commercial area at the ground floor. I should note that this project does meet the minimum requirement for landscape area once this area is included. There is landscaping and trees proposed on both ends of the project, as well as along the street frontage. This angled sidewalk and curb area is going to be used for transit location, and it's a situation where a bus will be able to pull in to this area, get out of the lanes of traffic on Cook Street, and then be able to swing back out without backing onto Cook Street. So this is something that is supported by our transit department. You see the trees here. Those trees will be in the right-of-way. And in a moment, I'm going to just review a condition that Wreckin' Parks would like added to the downtown permit set of conditions that the planning commission has before them. So I'm not going to go through all the individual downtown permit findings. These are all in the downtown permit itself, with additional descriptions of why this project meets each and every one of these findings. But I will scan these and just say that the project is adequate in size, the project will not have adverse effects on neighboring properties, the intensity of the project is appropriate for the site. In keeping with the downtown specific plan, the project responds to the pedestrian goals of the specific plan by providing pedestrian-friendly entrances and walkways, having abundant landscaping adjacent to the building, having a cohesive color theme and a design theme, and by providing pedestrian On this slide, you'll see a number of the things called out by the downtown specific plan, awnings, cornice details, window moldings, et cetera. As I mentioned earlier, this project provides each and every one of these items. So as I mentioned just a moment ago, Recreation and Parks Department would like to add this condition. It does appear very wordy, but I will quickly summarize. It essentially says that that landscape, any tree planting, in the right-of-way is part of the public improvement plans. There's an existing irrigation system, and Wreckin' Parks is asking that that not be destroyed, but be modified as necessary, so that it still may be used for other areas that the city will retain. And finally, that the landscape improvements adjacent to the street and in the right-of-way are to be annexed to one of the landscape So in conclusion, again, the planning staff supports this project. We believe it meets all the downtown permit findings. Therefore, we recommend that the planning commission, by motion, approve the downtown permit DT 2022-0017. And staff is available for questions and comments of the commission, and I would also like to note that the applicant is available and also has a brief presentation.
Thank you very much, Frank. Now, do we have any questions for staff? Go ahead, Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Frank, can you clarify the parking? Because I'm looking at Sheet 4, which is, hold on a sec. Sheet A2, I'm sorry, Sheet 3, the Architecture Set A2, where it's talking about the parking. So those are spaces that they're looking at, 29, is it 29 or 39? 29 designated parking spaces on Level 1. Level 1 is ground floor?
The proposed parking shown, first of all, thank you, Commission members and Chair. Commissioner Lopez, the parking depicted on these plans is conceptual at this point. We know that the applicant is relying on the parking being provided in the adjacent parking garage. The details of how many are on each floor, where those will be occurring, things such as electrical charging stations and how that might be accommodated within the city garage, all of those sorts of things are going to be handled through the disposition and development agreement, which, again, is something that is being prepared by the city attorney's office and city manager's office, and will ultimately go before the council for their adoption and approval.
But the DDA is going to be based off of these plans, right? But the DDA is going to be based off of these plans, right?
The DDA is going to be based off of the plans, but not necessarily in terms of its depiction of where the parking is located. The DDA will be using the parking requirement that is determined from this project, the 83 spaces that are determined, to ensure that at least that many are provided. The applicant is working with the City Attorney's Office on securing more than the 83 spaces for the use of this facility. That final number has not been determined. But the important thing to consider in terms of this downtown permit is that the required parking will be satisfied through the use of the parking garage, once that development agreement has been approved. And the permit itself is contingent upon that development agreement.
Right, but isn't that development agreement or that DDA going to be based off of these plans? And if these plans are already depicting what spaces are... Here's the reason I'm asking this. Page 5, which is A4, it shows 39 spaces on Level 1, which goes across the drive aisle if that's ground floor. So that doesn't make sense.
Chair, members of the commissions, I believe that is parking Level 3 on page A4.
Okay, but, okay, so then Level 1 is incorrect on that one.
So, yeah, the set that I have, and I apologize if there was some missed marks. Oh, I do see where the note on the plan says Level 1. That must be incorrect. The title of the sheet is Level 3.
Okay, so going back to Sheet A2, it shows 29 designated reserved parking spaces on Level 1, and that shows it all the way almost into the drive aisle going into the
Right.
...structure.
And again, these are just conceptual layouts of where this parking is going to occur. The city is the property owner in this case. And so the property owner and the applicant will have to work out where those spaces occur within that parking garage. They could decide that all of them happen on the third floor. They could decide that all of them happen on the ground floor. What the critical part for the downtown permit is that the code-required parking will be satisfied. And we do that by tying that, this permit, to the approval and adoption of that DDA.
Right, but if we're recommending that this development, this downtown specific, this downtown permit move forward with these plans, it's almost like saying that, okay, parking is not part of this. Because not until it's agreed upon and located, then, you know, where's it going to ultimately be and how can we give that recommendation?
And thank you for that. And yes, in a way, you are correct. And that's where we, through the permit language, establish that before they can pull a building permit, the DDA must be finalized. The location shown on these plans, again, is conceptual, but the permit requires that it has to take place. It has to be provided.
And the only reason I bring this up is because in study session, I said, you know, a lot of people use those designated, those parking spaces on that first floor. And if they're going to remain empty, say it does get approved there and it remains empty throughout the day, you're not going to have 29 parking spaces available. That whole southern end of that parking structure is full. So that's why, I don't know. I would be in agreement with them being on a whole different floor, on the third floor where there has the pedestrian bridge. But, you know, it's just, we can't do that at this point. So that's why I'm a little confused on how it ultimately gets moved forward.
Yeah, Commissioners and Commissioner Lopez, so in the permit, there's a condition of approval number 6 regarding parking. And so that lays out all the specifics about the future requirement for determining the parking for the project. One thought I had is if there is concern about the plans, we could require that the applicant just revise the plans to say conceptual pending final approval of the DDA. There also may not be, there probably will not be designated assigned spaces for this. There will be 83 spaces that are allotted or more. There could be more, as Mr. Alvaro mentioned. There could be over 100 designated. But they may not be specifically like, they're probably not going to have signage or something like that. But again, those are, and I know this is a little different. It is very similar to what we did with the Alvin Newton Apartments that were approved at the corner of Main and Broadway. The only difference for that one is that the disposition and development agreement had already been approved by City Council when we brought it to your commission. And so in this case, with this project, we're doing it a little differently, where we're coming to your commission first with a condition of approval that the DDA go to City Council after this, and that's required before they can pull any building permits to move forward with the project. So I understand it's a little confusing because they had kind of estimated on their plans where the parking would go. But we do have conditions that require that to be finalized. And we could add some notes to the plans if that would be helpful.
That'd be helpful for me.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chair, if I may just remind the commission also, something that's a little bit different than Alvin Newton in this case, because of the location of this project not being on a critical corner as Alvin Newton is, the planning commission is the determining body. This is not moving forward to City Council. The downtown permit, the planning commission will be its final stop. The DDA, however, separately goes to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Commissioner?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Chair. Frank, just a detailed thing, but the driveway at the front there at the corner, is that... It's shown like it's decorative paving or pavers, maybe? Is that the case? Is that what they're looking to do? I see a nod of the head over there, so.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. Yes, there'll be some decorative paving. And the, this plan that's depicting right now shows the port de cachet above. But my understanding is that it will be decorative paving throughout that port de cachet driveway and parking area.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do you happen to know how high the parking structure is? I can't get a sense of elevation above the parking structure. I just was wondering. Oh, there it is.
I don't know the precise height, but I believe it's in the 23 to 25-foot height. I think the parking structure actually is angled along the, as you look across the Cook Street frontage. The bridge here, the pedestrian bridge, the underside of it is depicted at just 19 feet. So that is so that fire vehicles can maneuver under that bridge. But I'm wondering if the applicant might have more information.
I think I can see it just from the depiction right here. I just wanted to get a kind of an idea in my mind, the scale. So I think that's plenty. And did I hear you, there's at least one laundry area in each floor?
Correct. Every floor will have a laundry facility.
And I'm sure you got that sized correctly for everybody. I'll wait on this one. The parking is kind of an issue. I just, I worry about the people. And so they're not going to have designated spots. They're just going to be like everybody else. They're going to find a spot. Except for on the third floor, I see some stuff.
Thank you, Chair. And again, as was previously mentioned, this permit does not establish where that parking is going to occur. I've heard various, I've not been part of the discussions on the DDA, and I've heard various ideas proposed. Some of them, as Dana said, are open parking, but just that the applicant will secure the right to use that parking for their tenants. Other ideas included coordinating off certain areas of the parking structure just for those tenants. Those were all just preliminary, and I have not been a part of those discussions. And so it's unknown at this point in time. I don't think there would be any problem with the commission if they chose to voice what their recommendations would be regarding where that parking occur or how it occur as suggestions.
Yeah, actually, for me, I'd like to hear what the thinking heads have to say about it. It's a big issue. And it's going to affect, the other side of the building where we did the other parking, I don't think it, to me, that parking lot never seemed as busy or as full as this one. This one here, I mean, whenever I've tried to go to the movies or anything, we don't even try the first floor, which for very good reason. And then the second floor is pretty full, too. So it's just something to think about. It is going to end up being an issue, no matter what we do. So that's, I think, all of our questions for staff. At this time, we'll have the applicant presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. Brian Schwartz from Plan Concepts.
Good evening.
Before we begin, I would like to introduce the applicants and our team real quickly. Burton Mark Fugate are the applicants and owners. And they've been in Santa Maria for many years and have designed many very nice projects. And this is going to be another example of another great project that they're looking to develop. So we also have Russ Garrison here from Bethel Engineering, Lori Tamar, Urban Plan Concepts, Murray Duncan is the architect. So we can start the presentation, please. Oh, I guess I'll start the presentation. So this is the site. Just a little bit of context about the site. We talked about its location. The downtown specific plan really talks about having, promoting infill development, getting residents down to the downtown, having mixes of uses, commercial, residential. This is just a great location, walkable to other areas. I looked up, the gentleman that spoke in public comment was kind of curious. Well, what kind of services, grocery stores? There's stores within a mile walk here and lots of services in the downtown for people to walk to. That frontage is going to have that redesigned bus stop. It's going to have the street trees, the redesigned sidewalk, as well as a bus shelter. That's going to, the architecture is going to match the building with LED lighting and signage and everything. So it's going to be a very nice public amenity for increasing public transit. And then just a little bit about the project statistics. There's a few studios that are smaller in size. And the majority of the units are one bedroom, about 400 to about 600 square feet. And then 28 two-bedrooms parking, and we've talked a lot about parking right now. That will be through the DDA. There is also a requirement in the DDA to contribute to a business improvement district. And that is going to help with maintenance of the parking structure. And the extent of that maintenance, I'm not sure about. But that could be coming up with a program for spaces, designating spaces, signage, charging stations, security, lighting, all of those things. So that is, will be a requirement of the DDA. With regards to the commercial, there's a couple of different commercial kind of components that Frank talked about. It's about 1,600 square feet for a restaurant or cafe. Then there's a lobby area with some kind of a lounge area that if people did not want to eat in the restaurant, they could take a coffee or something out into the lobby and use their laptop, get some work done. And then there's also outside dining within that courtyard area. And then the courtyard area, they talked about, you know, some of the amenities, tables, chairs, anything movable. We're hoping that they might be able to have some passive recreational opportunities out there as well. I'm going to turn it over to Murray Duncan, go through just quickly some of the highlights of the building and the architecture. Then we'll wrap it up and conclude for any questions.
Thank you, Brad. State your name and your address, please.
Hi, I'm Murray Duncan. Santa Barbara is my base, and my office is based in Santa Barbara. Chair, secret members of the commission, I'm going to keep my presentation very brief. Many of you have seen this project in the last few weeks and really happy to answer any questions you may have, but I'm going to move kind of quickly here. The site plan that we have put up here, see if I can get there. This is the ground floor site plan. And the focus of the project here was how do we create an edge to, a northern edge, if you will, to the civic district that brings the Santa Barbara heritage, the architectural timeless style that is in the civic district across and create an edge and in fact block the parking lot and act as a bridge between the port de cachet and the existing offices. Where is it there? Existing offices is port de cachet and then two-story office buildings that go further down Cook Street. And then how do we blend with the mall, which is a very large, pretty bland exterior? So we're trying to draw attention to this building using the six floors and the tower elements. Whoa, tower elements and architectural detail to break down the mass of our six-story building, but at the same time create an iconic, interesting, unique structure. So I think that's, we'll talk more of that once I get to the exterior elevations. But Frank did an excellent job in presenting most of the building components. The most important part I want to share with you right now is this is the tenants or the pedestrian access, if you will, from the right-of-way and then the pathway that takes us to the parking structure at the first and third levels. The idea here is it's almost like a concierge-type entry. You'd need a fob to get in, so there's security. People that live here will use this entrance primarily. There's an elevator also located within this lobby. We have a mailroom, a storage room, breakout meeting room, and I think I covered it, and a little laundry area. The whole idea here is to break the tenants or the occupants of the building away from the commercial side of the building. The commercial side of the building, on this side, I'm going to go to the next slide, which we'll show in large. Frank, again, discussed this. We have our main port de cachet drive-through. Yes, it is going to be enhanced paving of some type. We have short-term visitor parking for DoorDash or deliveries of various types. Then we have the administrative offices, the manager itself, shared restrooms, breakout lobby with a two-story volume, which actually, it's open through to the second floor and you have the ceiling to the third floor. So this has a very grand, open feeling is the intent, and more of a commercial and, you know, just a sense of arrival that's a little more exciting for a commercial use. So the proposed restaurant or dining facility, breakout dining here, as well as breakout dining out onto the back of the building itself. Another elevator is located on that lobby. Let me get back. The, another interesting piece is the trash enclosure. We will have enclosed, there'll be a roll-up door and the dumpsters will be rolled in and out as they're needed. The trash collection will happen as they'll drive through the port de cachet, stop here, pick up trash, and then move out so there's no blocking of traffic around this very busy intersection. And while we're looking at this piece, one of the important concepts that were required in the downtown specific plan on corner lots was to break the building back was to break the building back at a 45-degree angle, which afforded us this front sense of entry. Also architecturally, it gives relief as you're coming up to the corner, and you can see around to McCollum. So again, very important piece. Frank did touch on the downtown specific plan guidelines. I think we hit all of them. That was the intent. Even all of the architectural detail components was, have been, all eight of them have been addressed in our part of this design proposal. So I'm going to move ahead here. This is the second floor plan, and here you can see where we have the open volume through, right through here. Yet you can get, you can see across, so there'll be a handrail looking down from the second floor for the occupants, and then the elevator itself as it goes up. The units are stacked. The laundry facilities are identified, as well as the trash drop. So we won't have units leaving their trash outside the door to go down, and when they go down the building, they'll be actually gone. So the idea is these are high-quality, very nice units, and once you get up to the third floor, up to the sixth, phenomenal views, you'll see forever up there, so probably the best views in the city. So that said, it's, I think it's just a wonderful place to have to put up with, if you had to live there. The third floor, third through the fifth are pretty much very similar to the second. The only option is by the time we get up to the third floor, we have a terrace that's out over the port of Cachere, and that's the ceiling, if you will, of the main lobby of the lower level. This is the top floor, sixth floor, where we have our community center. And with that, we have a pretty wonderful place to have to be again, in that your view up here on the sixth floor, you see through. It's all glass through both sections. Then there's an outdoor terrace at this point. There's an exercise room that takes a view to the north, and then the breakout room or the game room, if you will. It looks through the exercise room to the north as well as to the south. Kitchen area with dining, community restrooms, trash drop, and laundry. Exterior, here's the elevation on Cook Street, and this is the break, the corner of the 45 that we were just talking about, and you can see the port of Cachere as you drive through it at this point. We've tried to blend many materials, very elegant, quiet, but as maintenance-free as possible. Cast stone is the brown, in the brown element details. We have awnings, potted plants, wrought iron rails, barrel tile roof, the dome top, tower elements. This is the upper deck at the sixth floor. So a lot of articulation in the building, and the idea here is, again, to break down that six-story mass, six-story massing, and give you a sense of a pedestal that moves up and down, meaning as you're coming across the building, we come down, we drop down a little bit, and then down, and then up. So it's interesting, there's fun details. It's not just a big blank six-story building. These are the materials we are proposing. The rear elevation, this, the parking structure is at about 21 approximately feet high. So it's going to block the first three floors as you're looking through, from the parking lot itself. The perspectives give you a better feel of what it's going to be like to see this, you know, the scale of cars on the street and our building breaking at that corner. The southwest perspective, you can see people up on the balconies and what the tower dome will look like, and how we marry to the parking structure. This, our building will actually look like it's a part of the parking structure, I believe, as you look at it from around the project. Another perspective looking up Cook Street. This is the east elevation in where the existing port of Cachere is shown right here that leads into the public lot. This is the west elevation. This is where we've cut off the bridges, so you can see the building. These guys would literally cross out in front of it. So this is just trying, again, to show that, how the bridge works within the context of the back landscaped area, as well as what the building massing itself looks like as you're going through. East elevation, we were just talking. Again, you can look down into the court between the parking structure and our structure, and then the bridge that I think gives us that unifying feature to the parking structure itself. Again, cars and buses in the rendering to give a sense of scale. Here's an aerial looking down in, off from the top level of the parking lot and our bridge in the rear elevation. Again, across from the city district, looking towards our project again.
And that's it for me. So this is our last slide, and just kind of in summary, you know, there's been a lot of talk about architecture within the downtown. There's been a lot of forums and discussion about it. This building is unapologetically Spanish colonial, and we chose that because of its context. It's across the street from the courthouse. It's across the street from City Hall. It's near the Methodist Church up the block. It's near the library. It even has, even the mall has some Spanish features to it. So we chose this, and the style, the materials, it's true to that style. And so it's not, it's not really a modern version or some other type of version of it. It's a timeless, classic type of style that, you know. The reason why this project exists is because you have an owner and applicant that takes a lot of pride in the buildings that they design and develop, and it is part of their legacy, and they have given the freedom to the architect to not just meet a couple of the standard requirements of the design guidelines, but every single one of them. And you're going to, I think it's a project that they're proud of and that the city can be proud of. So we've read the staff report. We agree with the findings, the conditions of approval. We ask for your approval of this project tonight. We're available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brian. We have questions. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brian, is the, is the drive aisle on the corner of Broadway and, what is it, McClellan, is that one-way or is it?
It's, it's one-way, yes, it is. You enter off of McClellan, and you exit onto Cook Street, and then it's a right turn only.
But is it limited to trash trucks? Or is it, I think in a study session it said Uber or DoorDash or whatever can use that.
There are three parking spaces right in front for, and it will be limited to very short-term parking, maybe 15 minutes, so that if people need to drop something off really quick or run up really quick, they can do that. If not, they can park in the parking structure.
And I guess engineering was okay with the site triangle as you're leaving there?
Excuse me?
Public Works or engineering was okay with the site triangle as you're leaving there?
Absolutely. Plenty of distance on a site triangle basis.
That's all for me. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Chair. I was going to ask you a question about fencing on the side, sides of the building, but it looked like from the perspectives that you guys weren't planning to fence the side. Is that right?
That is correct.
I think that's, I think that's okay. And then the dome at the corner, the taller feature, is that, what will be in there? Is that accessible or inaccessible, or what's the, I mean, what's inside of there?
Within the tower feature?
Yeah, within the tower, the dome.
I believe it's just decorative, Murray. Yeah, it's decorative.
And is it open air or is it closed? I couldn't tell.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too. I was going to, well, I guess we can leave this for comments, but regarding the sidewalk, and I'd mentioned it a couple of times, study session, and maybe the downtown revitalization, just looking at, you know, decorative sidewalk treatment there for reconstructing that sidewalk. So, you know, maybe that could just be a condition of approval. Edit if that sounds okay with the applicant, so. But that's not a question, that's just a comment.
Where exactly are you referring to?
Well, just the frontage, the entire frontage. I know they've got, they probably have to reconstruct all the sidewalk. A lot of it's, you know, broken or lifted. So my suggestion, at least I'd mentioned it to our staff, was that they put back a decorative rather than just a gray concrete, you know, put a decorative concrete sidewalk out front that I think could be, you know, reviewed and approved by community development and public works. So that would be my one recommendation suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a few questions. It doesn't appear that the fire department's had a chance to look at this one yet.
Oh, the fire department, Chair Seifer? The fire department has looked at this numerous times. The building has been redesigned, actually, to have all the units facing Cook Street so that there is fired ladder access from there. We also incorporated that back area, the courtyard area, so that they can get into that back area as needed. And there, the bridge, the bridges have met the clearance for the ladder truck.
Perfect. Yeah, that was my main concern on that one, is just making sure that we had the ladders that were long enough and we could get up there. So that's good. The bicycle, a lot of the projects these days that we're seeing are coming through, and they're giving us like a bicycle storage area or a bicycle, you know, repair, someplace to store. I didn't see that really designated here. Do we have something like that figured out?
There is a condition of approval that has been added to have at least 20 long-term bicycles, you know, storage spaces within the project. We have some depicted right now in the, for regular bike parking in front at the corner, but there will be more added.
Okay, it's for short-term type bikes, and then in the long term, they just take it to their units?
It will probably not be internal, but there may be exterior bike lockers. The location hasn't been determined yet because the condition was just applied, but there will be long-term bike storage parking.
Yeah, I've seen those on a couple of projects. I hope they do get used.
Yeah.
They're quite expensive to put in. What are our ceiling heights? I didn't, I saw 11 feet between the floors. Do we know what our ceiling heights are going to end up as? And what's the width of this building? I can't find it. It's about 40 feet wide?
Mr. Chair, Members of Commission, yes, it's the, you can see our floor-to-floor heights in that cross-section. We're at 12 feet, 11 foot up to, and then 12 feet only on the ground level, 11 feet on the upper level.
That's overall, so what's the actual ceiling height?
Actual ceiling is 10 feet.
Okay, okay, perfect. How wide is the building? I just can't get a, I'm thinking about 40 feet somewhere in there? I'm just scaling it. It doesn't, it's not on the plan, I just wondered.
It's approximately 40 feet, but honestly, this has been so darn long, I can't remember the exact width of that parcel.
Just trying to get a feel for it.
I'm embarrassed to tell you, I don't really have a dimension here.
I kind of scaled it. It's in the 40s, 30s to 40, high 30s to 40, somewhere in there. It was just curiosity, not a big thing. Okay. And when we're talking about the front property line, we still have a sidewalk, and we still have a green space behind that sidewalk, if I'm reading this correctly?
That's correct.
And so the property line, is the building right on the property line? Is that what I'm looking at?
Pieces of the building are, but if you can, when you look at the, like on that, on this floor plan itself, you can see that it moves in and out. So we intentionally have the units undulating to try and give us a sense of breaking, you know, breaking down the mass on the building horizontally as well as vertically. And then within those areas that pull back, that they will be landscaped.
So there's some green space in between there?
Yes.
And then that nice sidewalk out in front.
Okay.
And I missed it on the trash. Is there like chutes or something? What did you say about the individual trash?
Yes, we have trash chutes from every floor. So the ground floor, you walk into the trash room itself, second through the sixth, has a trash chute.
And there's a designation, like there's something that you can buy that's, so people can't be going down those chutes?
Oh, yeah, those days are gone. The trash chutes have a secured door and security lighting. And I mean, it's amazing, the alarms, and then the chute systems themselves where they break off, so you can't, it's not a free fall. It'll drop for 10 feet, then it slides and then drops, slides.
Every action movie you ever see has them. They're going through the trash chutes.
You won't get to do that in this building.
Okay.
You wouldn't even fit in the hole, so.
That's kind of my, yeah, good. Yeah, we probably don't need that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We're getting, a comment. I believe that we used to have a remote control car racing on that third floor. They were trying to utilize the top space on that parking area because it's so underused. That third floor up there, I rarely see anybody parking up there. I haven't been up there in a while, but that's pretty much all open every time I've been up there. Just saying that. And then on your elevations, I did notice that you have some canopies that are beautiful green on this picture, and there are beautiful red on this picture. Do we, do we know what we're, what we're going to make those? What color those are going to be at this point?
Yes, the Fugate's requested that they go to green.
They go to green?
Yes.
Yeah, green's a good look. Okay, thank you. That's it for my questions. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can we go back to the northern elevation? So those, looking at the ground floor plan, you don't show that there's pop-outs on that ground floor, but the tower elements of this northern elevation pop out from the plane of where the hallways stack?
The, these elements here are forward. Then there's a reveal back where the walkways would be, or are. This piece here is out right at the edge of our fire lane. In fact, we're maxed out in our depth. And then we pull back in at that area, then we're back out, then we're in. So there's a lot of undulation here, a lot, but it's only a foot or two is the maximum depth that we're able to achieve because of the width of the site.
Okay, but going back to the ground floor plan, I just, I just wanted to clarify that, that...
Maybe we can go to the ground floor, floor plan. I think Frank's going there. There we go.
So if you look on that north side, that shows that, I guess it's a covered walkway, but there's no?
Right, that's, that's the most forward element. And then there would be cast stone applied to it, but the reveal is where we break back in. So these are like columns, if you will.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't believe we have any other questions at this time.
Chair Seifer? Thank you. While we were going over the presentation and listening to questions, I was able to look into some more information, and I have some recommended condition changes. I think one that will address the parking concern that we could, your commission could make. So that would be the condition number six in your packet in the downtown permit. At the end of the condition, we can add a sentence that says, "The parking spaces shall be designated for use by the tenants and located adjacent to the project." And so that way we could have the DDA require that they are designated, and they would be located on any floor, but they would be located closer to the site. So that should give, I think that makes sense, you know, in this situation, because people are having, coming home, and they have groceries to carry and things like that, that it's best if they are designated. So we can, you can add that if you want to. And then the other item we noted that we could, we would address is 48, and that's the condition that Commissioner Blanco was discussing, the new frontage improvements. We could add a sentence that says sidewalks shall be decorative per the downtown specific plan. Those were the two conditions that I noted that could be updated.
Mr. Chairman. Dana, could we add excluding the first floor? Excluding ground floor? Because that was my concern, because that, that lower floor, southern end is pretty full all the time.
We could probably put something that says, "To the extent feasible, the parking spaces shall be located above the ground floor," if that's okay?
That'd be okay.
Okay. We can add that.
Okay, at this time, we're going to open this meeting up to the public. I don't have any request forms and we've put the notice out there on Zoom. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Hands are raised.
Okay, I don't believe we need a rebuttal. Nobody out there? Do you have any more questions while we're open?
Yeah, no, just, because there's, you're getting added to item number six, condition number six, because there's also a condition 30 that talks about parking.
All right, still getting used to these microphones. Yes, Commissioner Blanco, or sorry, Lopez. So I did look at that. So 30 is more about complying with California Building Code and that the charging station shall be installed and that any modification has to be determined through the DDA. So condition six really drives the number of spaces and where they would be located in those requirements. And then 30 is just making sure that they're done to code. And accessible.
Even though it says designated on the plans as assigned or unassigned?
Yeah, because what we'll do is we can have the plans noted that they're conceptual, that the location is conceptual at this point. And then once the disposition and development agreement is finalized, then that will essentially drive exactly where those are located and designated and everything. So the, the, the most important factor is that there's plenty of parking available and I totally agree with having them designated. I think that is important and was able to confirm that we can do that. So I don't think we need to revise 30. I think six takes care of it. But open to any questions.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, that's fine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, perfect. Seeing no questions on Zoom, we're in the, in the audience, we're going to close the public hearing and we're going to bring it back to the commission. Do we have a discussion or a motion? What do you guys got in mind here?
Commissioner Blanco? Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think we've heard this project, that study session very well. It was very thorough. I think the presentation today reinforced that. We answered some of the key questions. Of course, you know, parking's always an issue, so I'm glad that we're kind of vetting that out a little bit more. The design and everything, I think, looks great. I think it's going to be a huge asset to the downtown development and this area in general. So, yeah, I feel very good about this project.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, no, I agree. It's a great asset to downtown and I also feel pretty good about this project. Thank you, guys.
This, this is a wonderful use of the property that we have here downtown and it's a great infill project. And the builders are local, local guys and they build an excellent product. Their El Portero is just a beautiful, still the beautiful of this day. It's upkept, it's, it's just a gorgeous, gorgeous old development. So I'm looking forward to seeing what they have to do here. It's, it's a great use of the property. I think it's going to be helpful for downtown. It's going to help our numbers as far as housing. I think it hits all the things that we're looking at for this area and I'm excited to see it. So I would, I would be looking for a motion right now and I would remember to be adding for number six and number 48 if that's what you want to do. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve downtown permit DT 2022-0017 with the conditions modified, condition number six and number 48 as discussed by staff.
Do we have a second?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. And you're also adding the landscape condition that was requested by Park and Rec.
Correct, as well as the landscape condition by Parks and Rec.
That's fine, thank you.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Yeah, we do need a second, thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chair Seifert?
Aye. Thank you very much, you guys. Nice project. Thank you. Someone's got to get, Commissioner Mahashir. Are we ready to continue or? Okay, thank you. I, that's what I. The clock has not been reset. It's not nine o'clock. Just saying. Okay, everyone, we're going to continue now with item number five B, the City of Santa Maria Six-Cycle Housing Element and Adoption. And at this time, we're going to hear from Daisy. I'm afraid it might be a little late, but we're, could you please do your statement?
So, good night. Me and my colleague, we are doing interpretation in Misteco. I think that it's late already, but we are here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, maybe we have a staff presentation, please?
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. City staff is very pleased to present the commission with the Six-Cycle Housing Element. This, the housing element is one of many required elements of our city's general plan and it provides the written framework to meet housing goals of the city. This element is unique among the elements as it is required to be updated every eight years and that requirement is set by state law. It is also required to be reviewed by the state, which is, again, unique among the elements. The city last completed a housing element update in 2015. And this element, as I mentioned, required by state law, will update our element to meet current city strategy and thinking in terms of its housing needs and to demonstrate how the city will meet its housing requirements. Again, city staff is very pleased to present the commission with this Six-Cycle Housing Element draft for their consideration. This document represents the culmination of over two years of work between Community Development Department staff and our consultant, Lisa Wise Consulting, including the in-depth review of all past and current state laws, including new state laws that came into effect while we were working on the element. Multiple consultations with HCD staff, which is the Department of Housing and Community Development staff. Extensive public outreach and involvement involving not only a housing survey, but multiple workshops and open meetings and three rounds of submittal review and comment on the draft document by the state. During this time of, of developing this housing element, we've kept the commission and council apprised of our progress, including a study session with Planning Commission and an informational meeting that was held with the city council. So as I mentioned earlier, the housing element is one of the required elements that every city and county needs to include in its general plan. The other elements, land use, circulation, noise, environmental justice, those are all being worked on through the overall general plan update, which is ongoing. Because the housing element has the eight-year cycle, there's deadlines that the city needs to meet in terms of its adoption. And that is why the housing element is being processed on a separate path than the overall general plan update. The overall general plan update will continue. The housing element, if considered satisfactory by the commission and by council, will be adopted. So as I've mentioned, periodic updates of this housing element are required by state law. It's the only element that must be reviewed by the state and certified by the state. The fifth cycle element was adopted in 2015 and certified by the state that same year. This is the sixth cycle and the cycles are set by state law. And that covers the planning period from May of 2023 through May of 2031. The general plan update is a much longer-term document and that will be covering the years 2023 to 2045. So in other words, there'll be three housing elements, this being one of them, during the lifespan of the general plan that we're also currently working on. The slide depicts the structure of the housing element as the draft has been set up. Introduction, which goes over the city, the, excuse me, the laws, the background of the organization of the element, the data sources that staff and our consultant used and other statutory requirements. Projected housing need looks over the regional housing need allocation that we receive from the state. It talks about income levels and income limits. And it also demonstrates how the city proposes to achieve the number of housing units that we have been allocated. Housing resources looks at not only our available sites, but also other financial and administrative resources that can be used to facilitate housing. And then finally, the housing plan. This is the section of the document that outlines our goals, policies and the programs, which are the action items to achieve housing development during the next eight years. Finally, there are the appendices and the appendices make over, make up over 80% of the document itself. This, these appendices cover the site's inventory and the methodology used. It details housing constraints, research. It has a full summary of public participation and it also goes into affirmatively, affirmatively furthering fair housing, both analysis and future actions. And then finally, housing resources. So the appendices are the background data and research and methodologies used to develop the element itself. So the housing element follows the general plan vision and guiding principles that were adopted by the city council in 2021. Specifically, the vision statement. Santa Maria in 2045 is a community where families can establish and maintain multi-generational roots. It's a close-knit, culturally diverse and economically inclusive. And this is possible in part because Santa Maria offers affordable, safe, attractive and healthy homes and neighborhoods for all of its residents. The vision and guiding principles also went into a housing quality and choice principle, which is to develop high-quality and diverse housing supply. That document or that statement goes on to talk about the types of housing, how we can adapt parking, transportation and other resources to facilitate that housing. how we can adapt parking, transportation, and other resources to facilitate that housing. So, as I mentioned, there was quite a bit of review of state law. These are some of the new regulations that have occurred recently. Essentially, since the last element was produced approximately eight years ago, there have been numerous new state laws regarding housing, some of which mandating that the city provide or enact certain regulations, others allowing development where city code might not prefer development. All of these have been considered in the development of this housing element. I'm not going to go into these in detail, but as you can see, there's quite a few of them. So, a major portion of the housing element is the regional housing needs allocation, or RENA. This is an allocation that is developed by the state. They develop an overall number of housing units that are anticipated to be needed over the next eight years statewide. They then divide that number into the various regions in the state. The Santa Barbara County region is one of those, and then provide an allocation for that region. The region for, or, excuse me, the allocation for Santa Barbara County was that the county and all of its jurisdictions needs to provide for 24,856 housing units during the next eight-year cycle. Once that allocation is made to the region, the regional council of government, which in this case is SB CAG, then works with its partner jurisdictions or member jurisdictions to equally, or equitably, I should say, not equally, equitably divide that all total allotment among its jurisdictions. They use multiple different resources and databases to help determine what's appropriate for each jurisdiction. One of the more important aspects of that allocation or distribution comes out of the regional transportation information and sustainable community strategy, and that all has to do with the jobs-housing balance of each community. Therefore, with this allocation, communities with fewer jobs were allocated fewer units, and communities with more jobs were allocated more housing units to accommodate. So, for this six-cycle RENA, the city's allocation for RENA was 5,418 units. So, here you can see the allocation for all the member jurisdictions within SB CAG, and highlighted there is the city of Santa Maria's allocation. So, each allocation is also broken down into affordability. This affordability is established when the region receives its allocation and then is continued on as it is assigned to each of the member jurisdictions. So, as you can see on the table, the city of Santa Maria has a requirement to facilitate the development of 1,032 very low affordable units, 536 low, 731 moderate, and 3,119 above-moderate affordable housing units during the next eight years. So, in terms of what we're talking about when we look at those breakdowns of affordability, it all has to do with the, what percentage of the average median income for the region is being, or, or is the income of that household. So, extremely low is zero to thirty percent of the average median income. Very low is thirty-one to fifty, low fifty-one to eighty, and moderate income is eighty-one to one hundred and twenty percent of average median income. As you can see, and I'm using 2021 numbers because that's what the housing element document used, the incomes there for each of those income categories for a family of four in Santa Barbara County. Housing is considered affordable if the occupants or household pays no more than thirty percent of their income towards housing. And that's where many of our current households are overpaying for housing because their income levels don't match up with the cost of housing in the city. Here's another example where, per state information, rents affordable in this region for moderate-income households are the following: studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and you can see the prices there. Again, these are 2021 housing numbers. So, this, these are the numbers that would be appropriate for moderate-income households. Amounts less than the lowest amount on each of these categories would be considered for lower income, and then amounts above the higher amount for each of the bedroom types would be the above-moderate income household appropriate costs.
Frank, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
So, that's, these are the thirty percent of those.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
So, that was the RENA, and that's what has been assigned to us by the state. Next is our response to that, which is how are we going to accommodate that number of housing units in those particular affordability categories? And that's where our available sites analysis and inventory comes in. So, as I mentioned, RENA is the anticipated demand for housing. The site inventory that we developed documents that the city has the sufficient land with the correct zoning of sufficient area to accommodate that RENA expected housing development capacity. So, our inventory includes vacant sites, and we are fortunate enough to have sufficient vacant sites with the sufficient zoning that the city, unlike many communities, not only in our region but throughout the state, the city does not have to do any rezonings with our housing element to be able to accommodate our RENA. So, we have our vacant sites map and our table of vacant sites showing realistic development capacities for each of those sites, where if the density that's permitted by zoning might allow twenty-two dwelling units per acre, we've marked it down to be conservative and quote-unquote "realistic" by saying it's probably going to be developed at eighteen dwelling units per acre. And then using the size of each of those sites, we come up with a total yield per site. So, that's one of the ways that we are proposing, or the housing element proposes, to meet its RENA. The other way that the state allows us to credit the pending projects that are in process right now, and those are projects that have received discretionary approval and/or are in the building permit process right now but have not received a construction or a building permit. And even those projects that have received building permits and are under construction, we can use those towards meeting our six-cycle RENA requirement. And the housing element within the document lists all of those pending projects that we've attributed to our RENA. And then finally, unlike prior housing elements, the state has now permitted jurisdictions to use their ADUs that have been constructed towards crediting, towards RENA. So, we've also developed a projected accessory dwelling unit number, and those are the numbers that we foresee being constructed within the next eight years. Again, we used a very conservative estimate based off of our prior year's numbers to come up with a total number of ADUs that we expect to build. So, all three of these resources, we've added together, and the number of units coming from these resources exceeds the RENA requirement. So, here you can see our table that shows our RENA requirement, both in all of the land use categories or affordability categories, excuse me. And you can see the number of units we've projected that will contribute towards the city meeting those requirements. We tried to be very conservative in terms of not overestimating the number of units that we project. There's a provision in state law that is termed no net loss. And if the city in the future finds ourselves in a situation where either by some loss of an available site, either the site doesn't develop at the density we expect or it gets converted to another use other than residential, if we ever drop below our estimate in terms of our land resource, we would then have to enact zoning. We would have to identify sites that could be rezoned to make up that loss of available sites. And so, we, that's a very uncomfortable position for a jurisdiction to be in. So, we've tried to do our best to avoid the potential for that to happen by using very conservative numbers here. I will note that, as I mentioned earlier, many of our sister jurisdictions within the county and many jurisdictions statewide are in the unenviable position of having to go through a rezoning process. And when a city or a county is falling behind in terms of their adoption deadline, the regulations are even tightened further to where they have to complete those rezonings within a year of the housing element deadline. So, that puts a lot of pressure that we thankfully have been able to avoid. So, finally is the housing plan. And again, these are our goals, policies, and programs to facilitate housing within the next eight years. So, these goals are based out of our current housing element goals, promote new housing construction, conserve and improve existing housing stock, reduce or remove government constraints on housing, address special needs housing, and promote equal housing opportunities. Excuse me for a moment.
Frank, what does number three mean?
So, housing constraints. And, in this case, government constraints. That could mean excessive regulation or restrictions. One of the programs under that goal is for the city to complete its objective design standards. Objective design standards are believed to be better for developers to be assured before they go in to a project to know precisely what the expectations are for design and setbacks and so forth. A constraint would be considered a subjective design standard where it might say something to the effect of, you know, make your buildings attractive to the majority of community members. Well, that's, that's a really vague, vague standard to uphold, and each individual might have a different opinion about what is attractive. And that could be seen as a constraint because that could be seen as something that could be used to deny a housing project as opposed to something that says, you shall provide a one-foot step back for every thirty linear feet of building. There's no question about what that is. You provide a one-foot step back for every thirty feet. That's objective. So, it's things that are subjective, are onerous, requirements on housing, requiring special standards depending on the type of housing it is. Those are all considered government constraints. And so, each of these goals will have a program, a set of programs associated. Once I get to those programs, I think it'll become more clear.
Thank you.
So, for goal one, and that's promoting new housing construction, the programs are listed here. Density bonus is a program that essentially commits the city to following state density bonus laws and providing, facilitating density bonus on a case-by-case basis. Prior, or, excuse me, prioritization of services. That's where affordable housing is given priority in terms of sewer connections and so forth. And then a number of these, so a number of the programs here are existing programs that have been brought forward from our current housing element. There are a number of new ones, however. For instance, the accessory dwelling units. That is in reaction or response to the state laws regarding accessory dwelling units, and that is a program that basically commits that the city will keep our accessory dwelling unit ordinance up to date with the changes that happen as we've learned frequently with state law. Another new program is the Housing on Religious Institution Sites, 1H. That is a new state law where churches or temples or other religious facilities that have extra land area or have large parking areas can convert that area to be housing, even though the zoning may or may not support housing on their sites. They also don't have to replace any parking that was lost in that conversion. Surplus Lands Act site, that's a relatively new law that the city is already taking advantage of with the project we saw earlier today. And then accessory dwelling unit ordinance updates. There's another one that's a new, a new program. Yes.
Frank, what about building on commercial zone properties? Is that?
That is not going to be a program within the housing element. That is coming out of some state laws that would allow that to occur. That's part of the reason, jurisdiction, or, well, part of the motivation for getting a certified housing element is that the state has enacted the builder's remedy law, and that is, any jurisdiction that has not received their certification on their housing element is open to having a builder's remedy project come in to the city. So, that is one of the situations where a builder might propose housing on a commercial site. Once we have our element certified by the state, we would no longer be open to that builder's remedy situation.
Thank you.
So, under goal two, conserve and improve existing housing stock, we have some programs that are currently in effect. Minor home repair program, code enforcement program. Minor home repair program, code enforcement program. We have an energy conservation program. These have been brought forward. Some of them have been modified to a good degree. We've also included the at-risk affordable housing program, where the city will keep track of its current affordable housing projects that are within the city. Those affordable housing projects, when approved, have certain life spans where they have to maintain the affordability. And when they are reaching the end of that affordability period, I know earlier projects may have had a third-year affordability restriction. Those projects that are reaching that, the end of that time limit are considered at risk. In other words, there's a chance that the owner might decide to no longer keep those units as affordable, which they can do because they've met their requirement for affordability. But the city will work with those developers and property owners to see if there's any way to continue the affordability of those projects. 2E is another new program. And that's a situation where if development takes place on a project site that already has affordable housing on it, and that affordable housing, the structures are removed or demoed to make way for the new housing, that project will then have to make up the numbers of affordable units lost, either by incorporating it into their project or through other means to provide those lost units elsewhere. So under goal three, and here we are with the reduce or remove government constraints. All of these programs are essentially new, although we have, as a department, been doing many of these things anyway. I had already mentioned 3B, the objective design standards. That's a project that the city is already working on with a consultant to develop objective design standards and issue those for residential building developers to be able to have more assurance about their proposals. Residential permit process monitoring and improvements. This is one where the community development department will continually review and assess how they are doing in terms of the timing and difficulty in issuing residential permits. And if there's actions we need to take to help expedite those permits. Conditional use permits and planned development permits. This is where, through the land use element and future work with the general plan update, and then ultimately the subsequent zone, zoning ordinance update, the city will consider adjusting what projects, specifically residential projects, need to acquire a conditional use permit and/or a planned development permit. The idea is that perhaps there are smaller residential developments that would benefit from not having to go through that discretionary process. And coupled with the objective design standards, would still be able to meet the intent and the goals of the city in terms of residential development, but simply not have to go through the discretionary process. Parking standards, the R2 and R3 zoning districts. Again, those are going to be things that are going to be analyzed and considered in terms of changing those with the zoning amendment that will take place as a result of the completion of the general plan update. Program four, special needs housing. This is where we look at accommodations for seniors, persons with disabilities, homeless, those needing residential care, transitional and supportive housing, childcare, support for farm workers. All of these come out of state law in terms of each of these types of housings, housing types, I should say. And essentially, these are programs that, if we didn't include them in our prior housing element, we've been following state law anyway. And so while they may be new to the housing element, they're not new to the department in terms of our actions and permitting. And finally, goal five, promote equal housing opportunities. This has a lot to do with doing our best to eliminate any discrimination in housing, also providing assistance to lower-income housing families and households, distributing information about tenants' rights, environmental justice. We have a condominium conversion ordinance and just keeping that up to date, looking at environmental issues, which, again, here's something that we do with all of our discretionary projects already. This program just documents how we do it, and it's included in the housing element. And then housing mobility, making sure that all income levels have the ability to live where they choose within the city, and that all neighborhoods have equal access to things like education, transportation, services, that sort of thing. So that concludes the components and the bulk of what's in our housing element draft. I finally did want to also mention the public outreach. I've noted a little bit about it earlier. But just to reiterate, we've established a housing element update 2023 webpage early on in the process. And on that webpage, we posted all of our notices and information about the housing element, progress on the drafts. And we posted each draft that we sent to HCD on that website. We had Housing Cafe early in the process, affirmatively furthering fair housing workshops in the fall of 2022, Planning Commission Study Session, Council informational briefing. We had our housing survey that was available online for a good portion of 2022. News releases. We also partnered with the MYCOP, which is the Mixteco language, for Mixteco language interpretation. And I wanted to just thank them for providing all the services and helping us out through this process. We really appreciate your help. As I said, we posted each draft of the document on the website, and we sent out a notice of availability for each draft, inviting public comment. We did this not only by posting news releases on the city website. The Chamber of Commerce helped us with distributing some of those notices. And then we also had an email list of those that were requesting information on our general plan update. And that was sent out. That list is more than 500 emails long. And so each time we released a draft, we sent links and information about that draft to that email list. So finally, we come to the consideration by the commission and the recommended action. I do want to say that we did an environmental study and a negative declaration, which was distributed earlier this year, late last year, earlier this year. We received one comment from Santa Barbara Air Pollution Control District, just reminding us to be careful about putting housing near uses that might cause air quality issues. So no changes to the negative declaration were required because of that comment letter. And so the conclusion is that the housing element draft does not pose any significant environmental impacts. And that's the conclusion of the negative declaration. And we've included a resolution in the commission members packet to adopt the initial study and negative declaration. So that would be the first action the commission would take by resolution, is adopt that initial study and negative declaration. And then the next action would be, by resolution, recommend that the city council repeal the current housing element and adopt this draft six-cycle element, and then forward that document onto the state for their certification. And I do want to mention that, in terms of the certification by the state, we did have a major milestone recently, where the state, with its last review of our draft, has provided us with the determination that the draft complies with state law. That is a significant milestone. And this essentially says that the state is ready to certify our draft once it's adopted. So this is a very happy time for staff to have that certification or that proposal for certification come in. So that concludes staff's presentation, and I'm prepared to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Frank. I did have a discussion with Urban Planning Concepts about this. Any other commissioners disclose?
No.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Frank? Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Frank, I just, on the initial study, attachment C, the location of documents, the link that's on that, on that PDF or on that attachment, doesn't go to the location of documents.
I apologize for that, commission members, Chair. I believe that was due to our website being updated sometime after the draft was posted and before this process. I can say, though, that during the review period, those links were functional.
That was all. Thank you, Frank. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair, member of the commission, I do want to just mention one other item. I mentioned that the community development department produced this draft in association with our consultant, Lisa Weiss Consultant. We do have Jen Murillo from Lisa Weiss Consulting with us. So if there are more technical questions, Jennifer will be able to help the commission with those questions.
Thank you, Frank. Questions? Commissioner Mahajer, questions?
Thank you, Chair Seaver. Just real quick about the objective standards. Do we have an idea as to when we'll fully have that concluded?
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. We are in process, as I mentioned. We have a consultant, Raimi Consultants, working with us on that. Excuse me, we've had one preliminary staff-level draft. And we expect to have that back before the commission, probably mid-year. Probably mid-year 2024, potentially earlier.
Okay, perfect. And then just thinking a little bit further, the objective standards, is that going to be applicable to commercial developments in the future or just residential?
This document that we're working on is solely for residential. And that is in response to state laws requiring that we provide objective standards to residential developers.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Are you the applicant? Pretty much. Okay. We had questions. So I'm going to go ahead and open up a meeting up to the public. I do have one speaker slip. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands raised.
Good evening. Lori Tamora with Urban Planning Concepts have had the opportunity to work with staff and review documents as they were generated. Want to wish congratulations to the city on getting their recognition from the state that this document is ready for certification. That's a big step. The housing element law required that every jurisdiction in the state of California have a housing element certified by February 15th of 2023. And you can imagine what that meant for not only HCD, which was the agency that was receiving all these documents, but also all of these jurisdictions that needed to prepare updated documents. So it's been a scurry for every jurisdiction to accomplish an updated housing element with the new RENA numbers that came down from the state. So you can imagine the cycle that every jurisdiction's been going through. Couple of points in regards to the housing element. It is a precursor to the general plan update. And so these sites that they have identified for housing for the next eight years will also be rolled into the designations that will be coming up with the general plan. The success for the city of Santa Maria in this RENA cycle is that most of the land that has been identified for this current numbers were lands that were annexed in the last general plan update. And so those that are talking about just the whole infill option for the city of Santa Maria, the infill is going to be built on before you get to the next cycle. We need more land to develop in the city of Santa Maria for the next cycle after this, the seventh cycle, and then the eighth cycle. So on these waves of new housing assignments will be coming forward as we go into the next 25 years. I think the last point is that the city of Santa Maria does not build housing. It's the landowners, the developers, nonprofits. There's a number of other organizations. The city helps accommodate the process of getting housing built. And I think the policies and the directions that have been written in this particular housing element, and of course, what's coming down from the state, is going to facilitate housing being built faster, more efficiently. And I think we might actually see some reduction in costs for rents or housing, based on the fact that you can get through the process faster. That's my hope. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lori. I have a question for either Lori or staff. I did, it seemed to me when we went through the numbers, the RENA numbers, of what was required, that it was the above moderate that we were very lacking in. So do we have land designated in this go-around for that? Because that seemed, we had the low, we had the moderate. We had the lower stuff, but it was the higher-end stuff that it seemed like we didn't have. The numbers were quite a bit lower. Is that addressed in this also? We have, we have property for that?
Thank you, Chair. Yes. The, sorry, we're having a little difficulty with the... There we go. So as shown here, the numbers here are the either projects in development, ADUs, or the site inventory. And in the above moderate category, 3,119 units are required per the RENA. And we have a total estimated capacity of 3,330 above moderate units. So yes, we do have the sufficient land with the correct zoning to support the development of above moderate households.
Because I know we spent a lot of time up here with the low and the moderate. So I just wanted to make sure we had that one covered also. Thank you.
And if I may respond to that, some of those areas that have the potential for the moderate and above moderate are those that are out by Area 9. Those are sites that have been identified for potentially, you know, moderate and above moderate units. And applicants are ready to submit applications for those kind of developments in the future. So I think there are some pent-up demand in that category that developers will be bringing forward.
Excellent, yeah, because we're definitely going to need it according to this charge.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, commissioners? We're about to the end of this. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and we can discuss and talk about resolutions. Commissioners, anyone like to start? Commissioner Blanco?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think you brought up a good point about the above moderate, but I did notice that that was the majority of the RENA numbers, so that makes some sense, like maybe 60% or so. But otherwise, I think, you know, we've spent a couple of years now looking at this and studying it, and it's, staff has done a great job, and our consulting team has looked at it closely. I know I attended some of the public meetings and just heard a lot of input, and so I think a lot of work's gone into it, and I'm glad to hear that we're on the cusp of getting it approved or recommended for approval, so feel very good about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mahajer?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, I have to agree with Lori Tamora that I feel like, from what I claimed, this is going to provide the efficacy that we need to support the housing going forward, and good job on getting that green light from the state so far, so I'm excited to see this go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
I just want to thank staff, Frank, and Dana. I know it's been a long, hard road, and 310 pages of a housing element report is pretty substantial, so thank you, guys, and yeah, I feel comfortable with this as well. Thank you.
Yes, I remember those days of going to those community workshops and the little dots and all the things, and it was actually done very well, and we got a lot of really good feedback from the community. They were close to where the people were actually living. They could walk to the, they could ride their bikes, they didn't have to actually have a car. They were well-attended. I think we got a lot of good results out of those meetings, and I've got to say that a lot of people put in a lot of effort towards this, and I've got to commend you and thank you for your hard work and your effort, and it looks like you're ready to move on from this, which has got to be a huge relief. So thank you very much for your effort. And at that, would someone like to make a resolution? Commissioner Blanco, thank you.
I'd like to, by resolution, recommend that the city council adopt the initial study and negative declaration for the project.
Are we doing these one at a time? Okay. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
And can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahajer?
Aye.
Chair Seifert?
Aye.
Also, by resolution, I would recommend that the city council repeal the 2015-2023 housing element and adopt the 2023-2031 six-cycle housing element, and forward the document to the state Department of Housing and Community Development for their certification pursuant to state government code section 65585.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
And can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahajer?
Aye.
Chair Seifert?
Aye. Well, congratulations, it's moving on. Thank you very much for your hard work. It's directional. They told us we can't do that, just saying. Oh, my mic's hot. Look at that. Okay, that takes us out of that. We're going to go to other business now, and we have all reports from Planning Commission and staff. Do we have any reports?
Yeah, thank you, commissioners. So I just was going to remind everyone that there's a study session tomorrow at 1:30, and we're back at the community development department conference room, the moon room tomorrow. The Shepherd Hall is not available for us tomorrow, so that's where we'll be meeting for that.
I was in there today, and I had a meeting, and there's computer monitors, I think. Is that all been cleared out? The inspectors are in there, I think, or the plant choppers are in there.
We'll figure that out.
So we're there.
Good point. Yes, if it changes, I'll let you know through an email, and then we'll post a notice on the room if we need to change the location, but we'll get that worked out tomorrow or sooner. Thank you for bringing that up. And there is one additional hearing and study session that we have coming up in December, so that'll be December 6th will be a hearing, and then December 7th is a study session. We have Shepherd Hall for December 7th for that study session, and it looks like we're going to have probably three items on December 6th, and then that'll be, those will be the last meetings to the end of the year, and then we'll start fresh in January. So, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Anything for commissioners?
Yeah, Chair, I was just going to say, wanted to see if we could broach the subject that we talked about after the last meeting, and that was the meeting time for Planning Commission, and I know we were, in the past, it's come up, and so I'm not sure if that's something we want to talk about, maybe at the next meeting. I know Commissioner Dickerson is not here, but, you know, maybe starting at 5:30 versus 6:30, you know. We hadn't talked about that in a little while. I don't know if that's more convenient for everybody. I've been a supporter, maybe starting a little earlier. I know in the past it hasn't worked out, but maybe something to consider at the next hearing or just a topic of conversation to, maybe starting the new year if we decide to go that route.
Can we discuss that at the study session, possibly?
That's fine by me.
Yeah, because it really is a consensus of the commissioners. I've tried this before, and it is difficult, and even, I was, I brought this up twice before, and even my position has changed a little bit now because I've been working out of town a little bit more. So it would be good to have us all there and discuss it and make sure that it does work.
Sure, absolutely. I just wanted to see if we could broach that subject while we're coming into the new year, so.
Sounds good. At that, sounds like we're adjourned.
It's somewhere, I don't know where it is.